Is everybody ready? Because Mel's not gonna be here.
Hang up again. I can't see him.
Okay, thanks for coming, everybody. We'll call the meeting to order and start with the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thanks for coming out, everybody. If everybody could just remember, if you didn't sign in on the way in, if you just signed on the way out, so we can keep record of that, that'd be great. Uh, we'll start with the approval of the agenda. Paul, any changes, corrections? Dan?
None.
Okay, I got one addition under Engineers Report J1 for the 16th Street update on funding.
Could you please speak up a little?
Oh, yep, sorry, you can't hear me. Sorry. Um, we're gonna add under J1 Engineers Report 16th Street update from the engineer. Anything else from anybody else? Tim? Okay, entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ryan. All in favor, sit aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. And on a consent agenda, any questions for administration on a consent agenda? Intain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Ryan, do you have a second?
I'll say.
Thanks, Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, Jim did not come tonight, correct? That was all taken care of. Okay, so B1 is not coming. Uh, we'll go on to E1, the vacation of 18th Street Northwest, the public hearing. Um, any comments, review from staff first, and then we'll open the public hearing?
Sure, including your package, you have a number of items. Um, and some of these you've seen before. Obviously, there's overhead map of the, uh, uh, the particular area that we're looking at and, um, so, basically, just wanted to provide you some information, um, kind of how it, how it looks and...
Fifty, speak up.
Again?
Give me your microphone.
Um, including your package, you have information that discusses the, the possibility of this vacation. Um, Planning and Zoning did review this at their, uh, previous meeting, so, uh, just so you have information there, kind of the background on it, and, uh, the state statutes excerpted there that, that deals with vacation of, of right of ways and that sort of thing.
Sorry, sir, you're gonna have to speak up.
Okay, well, I am speaking in the microphone, so I don't know how much more I can really do, but I'll try and do my best. So, thank you.
Yeah, just get, get close to the microphone.
I guess, alright.
Get that closer.
Yeah, so, that's all I got.
Okay. Um, anything else before we open the public hearing? Paul, Dan, anything? Ryan?
No.
Okay. Um, we'll open the public hearing regarding the vacation of 18th Street Northwest. Uh, if anybody has anything they'd like to share with the council, just come up to the podium, state your name and address, and let us know what you're thinking.
Whoever made the motion to bring it up.
Oh.
Did you want to go? Did you, you're the one that got brought in here.
You wanted left over.
Anybody can come up.
I'll go if somebody else wants to.
Okay.
Anyways, I'm Dean Schuie, I, um, own some of the property out around the area there. Um, I guess the first thing I would just say, I, I'm not in favor of vacating it, because it is my only access to the property as of right now. I know there's been other proposals talked about, but nothing is in place yet. And, so that place, that road is in place, though the approach is wide enough for a full-sized street. Um, and that right-of-way was dedicated for it many, many years back. So, I would like to see it stay open. Um, I'm a little curious why I was not contacted back in May when the first meeting was held on it, and also on, in the October planning and zoning meeting, if they're gonna talk about vacating a street that affects my property, I would've thought I would've been notified. And I just kinda found the doubt about this by accident.
Well, you received a notice in the mail.
I received a notice in the mail just, uh, a few days ago, but no notice for the previous two meetings.
There was no public hearing held before this meeting tonight.
Okay. But, I mean, it's a topic that affects my property directly, and when they, you know, Planning and Zoning makes a recommendation to vacate, I would've thought I would've been notified prior to that. But, either way, I'm here tonight.
There isn't any notification requirement, so, I mean, I guess that is typically, Linda mails the notices out to a certain group of properties that surround that, but, thank you.
Yep. But, I guess my, um, my reason for being here is it is my only access to the property, and I would like to keep it as a viable option, um, since the right-of-way is already dedicated for it.
Thanks, Dean. I will note that there were items that are, include your package from Dean as well, so you had a chance to review those, so...
Okay, anybody else like to come up?
I know at one time, they were, they had talked about going around the backside from the stub street that goes down by Quick Trip, which is, what, 16th?
Right? 16th to the, to the west, yep.
They were talking about coming off the end of that and coming around the backside of my property, and then I would enter into my property from the backside. Since then, whatever's been changed, there hasn't been a road put on the backside. Um, they put me in a driveway through the front side, which goes down, uh, 18th, that he wants to use for access. As far as I know right now, if, if you wanna leave it as a street, I have no problem with it. But if it is a street, you need to plow it. Because you're gonna plow 16th, which is a stub, a dead end. And the street that goes by my house or 18th is, if you're gonna leave it as a street, which he needs access, or you're gonna put the street around the backside, or where your plans are, what will be done in the future, now, then, whenever it is, but it's left as a street, it needs to be plowed. Because we pay taxes in town, just like everybody else does, just like Quick Trip will and everybody else will. And you plow theirs, you plow ours, everybody's fine. I don't have a, I don't have a problem with it closing, I don't have a problem with it staying open. Even if you close it, I'll still let him come down through there with my so-called driveway.
But that's not the point, Jim.
Right. But it's either, you know, one way or the other.
Okay.
That's my say on it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Hi, Rich too, here. We've got the property on the north side of 18th Street. And I concur with, with Jim, it's a city street, it should be plowed. You can't deny closing it and cutting this man off and landlocking his, how's he gonna get to his property? It's been a city street, according to my abstract, it was platted in in 1960. If you look at the abstract, I do believe there's two streets to the north, uh, of me, of 18th yet, because there's 10 city lots north of me, that there is no access to right now, which Dean owns, except 18th Street. So, I concur with, with Jim, if it's a city street, it needs to be plowed, we're paying taxes on it. So, I say, you can't cut his lot and landlock him. I gotta know how it's feeling for Dean, the three of us get along fine. Let's not stir something up, but make up your mind, you know? Because we'd like to know,
Sure.
because I don't feel that I should have to pay my plow guy to come off of a state highway. He's gotta plow a portion of the city street to get to my property. If you're gonna say you're not gonna plow it, but you're gonna leave it open. Uh, you can't have it both ways. And I heard the same story that Jim mentioned. Yep, we were gonna be able, or we were gonna be changed and be coming from the backside of, of, backside around his property, which would get us to ours. I don't know where that plan went, or whatever, but... Can't have, can't have it a city street not being maintained. That's my take on it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else?
I would just like to follow up a little bit.
Yep, that's fine.
So... I understand what they're talking about with snow removal, I guess, to me, that, that's a whole separate conversation. My main beef on this whole thing of, of closing it is, I know the kind of pain and the butt I went through to get an access on 57, on property I have to the south. In fact, I'm still dealing with issues on that, which it's beyond me why I should have to be dealing with that many issues just to simply get one access. Knowing the fight I had to go through for that, I think the possibility of me getting additional accesses north of there are about nil and none. So, this access is already in, it, it's already, you know, the curb cuts in, it's a full street width. It's my best choice to have a street coming in there, 'cause, um, you guys have dealt with MINDOT before. I mean, there, there is no, um, arguing with them, there's no, um, you know, they make up their mind and that's it. So, that's the main reason why I don't wanna have this street vacated.
Okay, thanks, Dean. Anybody else? Everett?
This doesn't pertain to that.
Well...
I'm talking about something else.
We gotta, we have to finish the public, 'cause we have a public hearing for this specifically. Can you wait till after we're done with that, and then I'll let you come up and say something? Or is it about the vacation of the street?
No, it's a different, a little smaller topic.
Can you wait till we're done with this one first, and then I'll, I'll have, I'll let you come up after we're done with this, so we just do one thing at a time? Thanks, Everett. Okay, anybody else have anything about the possible vacation of the street? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Um, council discussion, input, engineer, anything?
Well, we did invite Brad to come with too, so, um, I think the distinction between an improved road and a right-of-way, a public right-of-way is something that has to be considered. There are a number of public right-of-ways, and I think that would've been the feedback from Planning and Zoning and two related to that, that are not, uh, that are not plowed. That's typical. Um, I think the city engineer brought up a point about public right-of-way and considering people's driveways at, at one of the previous meetings, so... Um, I don't know, Brad, if you've got anything you'd like to highlight?
Would you like to speak up, please?
Brad, is there anything you'd like to highlight?
Thank you, much better.
Much better.
Uh, first, can people hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, I, I can only really speak to this from a longer-term planning perspective, but, uh, to your point, Tim, I think the, the key distinction here is, is there a physical street built there, or is it just platted right-of-way? If, if Mr. Schuie is gonna develop his property in the future, that's one thing. Um, that's gonna, that's gonna affect the access to Highway 57, and you're gonna have the same issues trying to find, trying to get approval of connectivity to 57 once you develop the property. We really need to understand what that development pattern's gonna be to comprehend the plan. Guys, that property is more job, job growth, and so ultimately, there's gonna be some kind of plan there and some kind of road that's gonna connect to 57 that's a, a street, and then all the developers will access that street. It's not gonna be where 18th Street is right now, that's too close to the intersection. MINDOT won't approve, uh, enhanced development or, or additional development that's gonna require that permitting of a new driveway once you change the, the use on the property. So, so the long-term, in, from a planning perspective, and Brandon can back this up from an engineering spacing standpoint, the 18th Street really doesn't serve a, a purpose. The other two right-of-ways that are platted, right-of-way, there's no street there, but platted right-of-way that do provide access to the Schuie property or to the north, and then the backage road that's been brought up on a couple times, and we did get right-of-way platted on the west side of Quick Trip between Dodge County that connects down to 16th Street. The idea is being there that you would have some kind of circular, uh, street connection that would provide access to where there's more development potential with Schuie's property. And ultimately, the, the residential properties, I think the property owners here that have spoken, you know, what happens to those properties, uh, when you decide to move on and sell? I think that all gets encompassed within whatever development plans might be there and changes to access. So, from a long-term planning perspective, you know, 18th Street, that right-of-way definitely serves a public purpose. Most likely will not serve a public purpose, um, but it really depends on what the, the larger development redevelopment plans are for it, which we just don't know at this time.
And that, I'd just like to say that, that, that was my thought too, when I was looking at this, is that, um, Mr. Schuie said this, is that it's not currently a street right now, so, we're never gonna get approval from 50, from MINDOT to actually make it a street, 'cause it's too close to the intersection. So, there's no point in holding it. Now, if we vacate, um, I assume that property's gonna be returned to the adjacent property owners. I mean, in, in terms of Mr. Schuie having access, I'd assume there'd be a way during, during that vacation, we could have some sort of access agreement, so that he could utilize that, what's currently a driveway, a pretty wide driveway, there until such time as he has other access to his property from somewhere else. Because we are planning on putting that, that west-side street heading north off of 16th. I mean, we, we haven't got there yet, but it is planned to do that, which will eventually give Mr. Schuie access in the future. And then obviously, if he develops, it's like, just like Brad said, um, whatever develops there will most likely require some sort of northern access, which will have to go through MINDOT, which is gonna be difficult no matter which way, would, would, what way we end up going with it.
Okay. And then you've got right-of-way, or?
No, I, I think, uh, with respect to, um, the access to Schuie, I think one of the considerations for the council, if they do vacate it, to provide an access easement, uh, for the other adjacent property owners, um, to use that as a shared driveway. I think that'd be important, so we're not landlocking that property. Um, and we keep saying it's not gonna be permitted as a street. I would say it's likely not permitted by the street, we don't necessarily know that yet. To Mr. Schuie's point of, um, that being a platted, plated as a city right-of-way may give us some negotiation with MINDOT when it comes time to develop. It may, it may be some advantage to do that, so, um, by leaving that as a city street in future development. So, that may, um, vacating it may hinder our ability to argue that that's a city street. Um, and then, see, we're gonna be calling it a city street, I think to Brad's point, it's platted as a city street, but it's not constructed as a city street. It is constructed as a shared driveway at that property, or those property owners' request. Um, as part of the 16th Street Roundabout Project, um, that driveway is gonna be the same way that it was, uh, previously out in front of the houses. They requested it to go between the two houses, so that's where we built it, um, at their request. So, it's a little bit of a nuance of what's been talked about tonight on street, not street. It's, I would call it a shared driveway within a public, uh, right-of-way. Um, so it's a little different than, little nuances in what's actually constructed. So, I think vacating it, again, to Schuie, Mr. Schuie's point, decreases some of the leverage that we may have against, with MINDOT, uh, when we go to ultimately developing that site, so... MINDOT doesn't view that as a city street, they view it as a single access. So, if we do develop it, and wants it to become a city street, it being platted may have some advantage in the permitting process, so...
I'd just like to say that I don't think that it's in our best interest even to use it as an access to that property, though, because of its proximity to, sorry, the intersection anyway. We wouldn't want anybody going into that development taking left turns right after coming out of Roundabout anyway. Uh, in my opinion, and maybe Brad could comment on that too. I think, I believe that's what you said before, Brad, is that that's really not a great place to have a street connection because of its proximity to the Roundabout?
Yeah, it's not, it's not ideal because of the proximity, but I think to Brandon's point, until we know what all property owners are trying to do, it may be something that having it, um, is beneficial down the road, I just don't know. But from a operations and siege standpoint and a standards, uh, standpoint, it is, you know, too close to the intersection. And to make sense, you can align, line those access points up, um, with, with access points across the street. Um, those are other considerations, and where the 18th Street is right now, it doesn't line up with any of the access points too, for example, in Norly parking lot for the school. So, I think there's a lot of things that as you get into the planning, and as we start talking about, you know, development intensification and access points that are factors, we just don't, don't know yet. We haven't done the planning work to figure that out.
Okay, Dean, did you have something else you'd?
Yeah, I, I guess I was just gonna say, you know, when the street was put in, you would call the street, the driveway, access, whatever, but it was put, put in at the whole width of a normal street. So, that part is already there. And as far as the reference, uh, that is too close to, to the Roundabout, it's really no closer, actually it's further away than what the, uh, Quick Trip entrance is off the other leg of the Roundabout. So, I don't think the distance-wise is, is a problem. Um, and to Brandon's point and, and what Brad had said there, right now, we, we have the approach there, the dedicated right-of-way is there. Do we have to make a decision on this right now to vacate it? Because it's gonna potentially disrupt or impact when the development happens there as far as where the street's gonna be. Right now, we have the approach there, we have the right-of-way there, leave it, leave it as it sits. Once you get, get a street put in the backside, if you wanna revisit the discussion at that time, fine. But right now, this is my only access, and it provides some leverage when dealing with MINDOT.
Okay, I'm just looking at the map, sorry, I'm not gonna just...
Is this all because you just don't wanna plow that street, or is it? What's the big deal on it? Why, why do we have to go through this? Is it just because you don't wanna plow it? What's it gonna hurt to plow that? It'll take two minutes, a minute up and a minute back.
Yeah, that's...
It's so crazy.
16th Street, they're right there from 16th anyway.
Again, I'll differentiate between city street and shared driveway. And again, I think that's...
It's a city street.
Before, the road coming in in front of our house was just for...
And we did not construct it as a city street, it was constructed as a shared driveway. So, from, what is it called, a city street, it's in public right-of-way?
When was it determined to be a shared driveway? When?
Who determined that?
When it was...
And when?
What was the road that was in front of us before? Would that was a shared driveway then too? Because it just came to Rich and us? Is that a shared driveway too then?
US property owners asked us to construct the ro, the driveway where it is now, correct?
Because we have semis, and you wanted to take our approach to our house away and give us something else that we had to turn around and try to back around to get back onto the highway.
So, we built it where you guys, as property owners, requested the, the driveway to be placed, so, just wanna make that clear.
You took away our driveway to give the Quick Trip, our, our driveway that we used that.
Because it's all about the dollar. Well, we pay tax dollars in the community too. And it's, it's a city street, it's 66-foot wide, that's designated as a street. Don't tell me it wasn't a street. That's just...
It was never a shared driveway right there.
It's a street.
Coming off, coming off of that highway, it was never a shared driveway where it's at right now.
It, it, it was a gravel driveway in the public right-of-way.
It never came off of the highway there, it came off where you gave Quick Trip access.
Don't disagree, it's still a gravel driveway that served properties in the public right-of-way. It was not built to city street standard, so, again, are we calling it a driveway or?
How to get plowed as a city street then?
The road that was in front of our house was never done up as a city street either, and it was gravel. And you plowed that for how many years? Forty-some years that we've lived there? What's the big deal? I don't get it.
Can you read your side?
We pay tax dollars just like everybody else in this community. What's the big deal? It's designated city street, 66-foot wide, and spend that way for all 44 years that I've lived there. I don't get it, just because you don't wanna run a plow up there now, all of a sudden? Seems pretty stupid to me. To go through all this BS just because of that. You gravel before in front of our house, and you plowed it for how many years? What's the big deal? It's less of a road now than it was before.
Should we have been...
Makes no sense for me.
It doesn't make sense at all.
The greatest benefit for that, where it is, is for their trucking business to get in and out. But I still have to use that to get out. And as I said before, I don't feel right about having to pay the person that's gonna come plow my driveway to start plowing right at 57 and plow his way in on a city street to get to me. Is it a resident? It's a simple, just...
I was just gonna say, that gravel, that street in front of our house for years was not set up as a street either. It was narrow, just like our drive is now that comes back there. And you plowed that for forty-some years, 44 years for us, 45 years for them, and it was never an issue, and it was gravel, and it was re-gravelled last year, and it didn't wreck no plows, we never got a lot of gravel in the yards or anything else. So, why is it an issue now? It's less of a road, less long than what you plowed before. It doesn't make sense why we're even dealing with this crap right now. Just plow the damn road, let's be done with it.
If it is a street, leave your access there.
Did we have to, in, in the past, before we, before, when it was access?
Speak up, please.
Is there a way you could sit in the, the front row to hear a little better? I'm trying to be louder, like, unless I shove it in my mouth, it's not gonna get much louder. Yeah, I mean, if you sat closer, it would help too. Right?
I can hear, I have a problem.
Okay. Is it, did we have to plow it previous, prior to the construction of Quick Trip? Or were we doing that out of courtesy because it was at a driveway access? Could we have said at any point in those 44 years, because it's not a functional street, it's a driveway, a joint driveway? Could we have said at any point in the last 45 years, because it's not a street, we don't have to plow it? Could we have done that?
Actually, the street went all the way through Cuttingham Lot, LC Trucking Lot at one time. That was considered as Manorville Avenue.
Years, probably 20, 30 years ago, yes.
So, then they plowed north to south, yeah?
Yes.
Yeah?
Starting at 6, what is now 16th?
Because that was the only access to that spot?
Yeah.
But now the access is on 18th Street to an adjoining driveway, which is not finished as a road. I, I, I come back to that, because I lived in Manorville for a few years, and we were on a, a gravel road. We were on a road that went down, connected to a residential home. It was their driveway before they constructed homes around it, and the plow stopped in Manorville before they got to that individual's driveway, even though prior to the houses being there, which was one of my houses, was all their driveway. So, it was an adjoy, it was adjacent driveway that we were all sharing, because it was their driveway prior. But they didn't plow that person's driveway when it got out of city property.
We're not asking to plow our driveway, just plow down 18th Street. Was that guy, did it have a street? Was it designated 66-foot wide street?
It was not.
Okay, this is, and it has been for all the years I've lived there.
It says 18th Street on the plaque.
On my abstract, it says...
It doesn't say 18th access, 18th whatever, it says 18th Street.
So, we're here, so, you're requesting to have it plowed, that's really what this is about, correct?
Well, this is why they're wanting you to vacate it, so they don't ask to plow it.
Not they, we as a group, right?
Well, not a we, but you guys.
When, do, Brandon, do we have a plan for when that west connection is gonna go through? I know that was something we had talked about in the past. Like, do we have a timeframe? Do we have any thoughts on how delayed that is because of costs?
Ultimately, it comes back to you guys as a council, right? But, um, no, I don't, I don't think so. What I envision is that there's gonna have to be a significant development in there before the council would move on it, would be what my gut tells me, but you're the council, and you can provide direction on building that road. But, um, I envision it when the Schuie residual property up there develops, or if the county develops something, was, when I envisioned that that, I'll call it the backage road, behind the Foot and Tune Residence, uh, would be built, um, when there was some significant development. Otherwise, what are we building it for? I can't imagine that we're building it just for access for two residential properties, but...
Yep. We, we do have a timeline on the 16th Street extension at least, right?
Uh, we're gonna talk about that underneath, uh, E1 about chasing some more funding for potentially...
Yeah, which I assume with that extension put in place, would also spur development at the Schuie property.
Yeah, absolutely, especially to the south.
If, if we chose to build a road, would we have to assess the property owners that are adjacent to that property? An assessment for it?
Could.
Yep. So, we could add access around to the outside, but we'd have to have that cost burdened on them.
Furthermore, I mean, uh, the Foot and Tune Residence could petition the city council to build a city street down 18th Avenue too. Uh, we'd have some permitting issues with MINDOT, but could be a discussion we could have.
The best thing to do right now would be leave it alone, plow the street, and call it a done deal for right now. Don't close the street, just plow the damn street, leave it there, and table it.
Okay, anybody else got anything before I say what I got to say?
Can we just determine, what is the, the difference between the city was plowing the, uh, fronty road alongside 57, that curl at 57? They were plowing that before. And now, they're, they're asking just to plow in a little way, so it's actually a shorter distance than what you were plowing before, and you were plowing gravel before. So, what is, I guess, I'm trying to get it through my head, what is the difference between, why, why would you plow that one and not this?
Yeah.
And I'm not necessarily advocating...
I'm playing around, my head around that a little.
That, that argument, but what, what is the delineation there? Why, why is there a difference? That, that argument. But what, what is the delineation there? Why, why is there a difference?
Yeah, no, I'm trying to wrap my head around the same thing. So my, my suggestion's gonna be to everybody, and I guess it's to you three up here. We may or may not need access off of Fifty-seven, which is kinda there. If Dean would develop his land in the back there, it might be really difficult to do that or impossible. But we don't know till we actually do it. The backer road isn't gonna be built until there's actually development gonna be going on, right? Nobody wants to go build the road to nowhere just in case someday it gets developed, which hopefully it's next summer they come to this development agreement and we have to worry about it. My idea would be that leave the arrangement like it's been. Our biggest risk here, to go on record with it, is there's other places in town that have not been plowed, that have been this public right of way. That if all of a sudden we get people coming out of the woodwork saying, we want you to plow this, plow this, plow this. That's gonna be our biggest thing is we just need to be consistent. But my thought for right now, and we could deal with that later if it becomes an issue. But for now, leave it like it is. We're not doing any different than we've done before. We don't know if we need the access to the back through that spot or not. So if we vacate it and it would become a viable access, we've just lost that. Now we have, I mean, we vacate it back to the landlords and they could say, hell, we'll, we'll grant you right of way through there, but we're gonna put a toll in. Um, exactly, you know, I've gotta think like everybody would. Um, so my suggestion would be, thanks for the work, but until we know about the development on the backside, leave it as is, the same agreement we've had. And if it becomes an issue with the right of way being plowed in the future, then we'll deal with that at that time. But right now, leave it like it is. It's the last spot that they were plowing before. So that's my suggestion. That's just a, my two cents.
You're suggesting leave it and plow it.
Correct. The same arrangement we've had before.
Stand forward.
Until, until, that's just my recommendation. I'm one person.
Yeah.
I'm just, um-
I agree with you. That's two of us.
Well, unfortunately, the ones who, ones who vote are up here. Um, that's my opinion. Until such time as we hit development, things happen, then we're gonna have other really difficult decisions on, discussions on what's the next up because development stinks sometimes, right? If you're on the wrong side of it. But it's, it's happening. We're, we're-
We've got QuickTrip next door and there's no berm or no fence up. What's up with that?
I don't know about that.
LC Trucking, the city was supposed to have put up a berm and the city never pushed that issue.
Okay.
And now we got QuickTrip there and now who is it?
That's a separate thing, but we won't tackle tonight if that's okay.
Take it at a time.
Uh, but that, that's just my two cents. I understand where everybody's coming from. But really, as I see her and just look at it, look at the map, we're gonna make a decision that could have a long-term impact that we just don't know all what's gonna happen in six months, a year, two years from now. We may be back here in May, Dean has a development agreement because somebody wants to build something back there and we're gonna need to put a road in lickety-split. And MINDOT's gonna say, no, you're not putting access for that many, that much traffic going on that too close, whatever they might do because they do whatever they wanna do. Um, so that's my suggestion. Uh, we don't have to take any action tonight unless you wanna take action. We can certainly call for a vote if you'd like to. Um, but that's just my suggestion. Any comments on that?
I do have a comment. So if we were calling it a driveway street, let's not go, let's not argue. I'm not going there. It's been put in as, for our engineer as a driveway. That means it's not rated packed for snow plowing to come across. When that gravel rolls off and it's gonna roll off, who is gonna clean it up? Who are you gonna, are you gonna make the city come back every time we roll gravel in the yard just for the end of the road, or are you gonna clean it up?
We clean it up every year from, uh, on our driveway, let me tell you.
Well, I'm just saying, cause that's gonna be the very first thing next spring. Somebody's gonna come and say, we got twenty yards of gravel laying our ground, cause it happens. I'm just, I'm just asking. I'm just-
Well, on the first day, we never ever had a problem with it.
But this road is brand new and it's not packed. That gravel's gonna roll. Guaranteed.
They did pack it.
Guaranteed, it's gonna roll because it's fresh gravel. You will have gravel in that yard.
Somebody's living out of there three, four, fifteen times a day.
I'm just telling you, I know how it works.
Hey, do you want me to sign something that says I won't, I won't make you get the gravel off of my grass?
Well, I'm just, I, I just, no.
It's very easy with-
I'm just saying, you know what I'm saying, Jim. Nothing wrong. I'm just saying that is gonna be the first thing and not saying you will, but you know as well as I do. You saw your property and it's still gravel. The next guy's gonna say it. That's all I'm throwing out there.
I'm not worried about that.
It's very easy with the equipment that's out there. I'd run heavy equipment and nothing my ears. All you gotta do is just lift it up an inch and leave an inch of snow on.
And then you gravel put up and it rolled out frontier last year and they never-
Most generally, most generally, all those blades run about a half an inch.
They do run up. I do know.
Hey, Dan, Dan, we can, we can leave that alone. Good point. Anything else, Paul?
Uh, I'm, I guess I'm fine with, with holding off or tabling the vacation until future development in the area.
Okay.
I just, again, I don't like the idea of the city holding right of way that we really don't have a good purpose for, so.
Right. And I'm with you because I've always been on record saying the city shouldn't own property that we're not gonna use. Or in this case, we don't know.
I have a better solution for Mr. Schuetti. I'm fine with holding on to that.
Okay. Dan, anything else besides gravel? Okay, thanks. Ryan?
I wanna take Mr. Schuetti's opportunity to get to his property away, so I wouldn't wanna vacate, no.
Okay, so for now, we'll-
Lay it on table, can we? Or motion to table maybe?
Yep, I'll make a motion to table this discussion till sometime well in the future when we have an idea about development behind there.
I'll make a motion.
Thanks, Paul. Any further discussion? Um, David?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Considered tabled. Thanks, everybody, for their public input.
Mayor, can I just add about the site plan regarding the, the berm or the?
Yes, okay, now we're done with that?
Yeah.
Engineer has an update on the berm.
Yeah, maybe just as a courtesy of the property owners, a question was asked about screening to the north. As part of the QuickTrip site plan, there is gonna be some trees planted along that north property line. So there is gonna be a buffer as part of the site plan. They may not be in yet, but the, the QuickTrip isn't open, so.
Yeah, because we put that patio on the other side of the house just because it was private back there and then now it's like-
It's bases right out there.
Yeah.
Trees ain't gonna cut it.
I can't even sit out there and have a beer and stuff without everybody in the town that comes to QuickTrip knowing about it. So it's like, I really like, you know.
On top of that, now my property sits probably eight feet lower than what theirs does. So what happens at two o'clock in the morning after the lady has picked her husband up from the liquor store and she stops to fill the car up with gas and he decides, geez, isn't that tree over there? I'm gonna go pee over by that. And he falls over the bank. You know, that tree ain't gonna hold him back. And that stupid person that had too much alcohol, don't give a shit whether it's a tree or what. You know, we need some, we need a fence. Every place they've gone, even when it used to be in town.
Would you see that little stretch there by, you know, from where the gas pumps are?
Casey's put up a fence. The old, the old spot where QuickTrip was, they put up a fence next to beer stands, you know. Wherever they've gone, even in Byer, and they've got a fence.
You know, just from the north end of the, or the west end of the shop, out of ways, you know, to the gift-
Just to block it off.
A little bit, you know.
Okay. Can you bring that up, please?
Yeah, we can.
A lot of staff meeting tomorrow.
You can have them come out and visit, you know, if they wanna come out and look and see exactly what, you know, what's happening there. I mean, it-
We went out there the other day, um, this last weekend and cleaned up on the back of the shop, which we've never put anything back there. And, uh, we picked up pee bottles and everything else that was left over from prior and, uh-
But you know, every, every car that pulls in, you know, because it sits higher, you know, and these, these trees aren't gonna be touching each other and they're not gonna go to the ground. You know, the lights are gonna come across and stuff. Just the, just the fence.
Okay, we'll bring that up with them.
And it don't need to be the whole length, but you know, just to get it back or a little ways or whatever. I would think it's something to get through the way.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night. Everett?
Everett, you're on.
What you got, buddy?
Population signs. I've been thinking about it for a little while. Uh, my situation that I'm wondering about. When is the, uh, population sign on thirty-four on the west side of town and on the east side of town gonna have the new number on it?
I have no idea.
Uh, because I was told, I went to the landfill and they, they told me about doing, uh, check with the county engineer. Well, I didn't go there, but, uh, the day of Ludefisk at the church at St. John's, I don't know why I was, but I thought of, uh, Tim Tojus was standing there. And I knew he's a county commissioner. I asked him the same thing and he said, well, that is city. So I'm just wondering, just ask, uh-
Yeah, I don't know. Do we update those signs?
No, that, that number is six thousand one hundred and twenty-four because I got it memorized. And the new number that the state's got is, uh, six thousand eight hundred and fifty-one.
I think it's over seven now. I don't know if the MINDOT takes care of that because of the MINDOT right of way?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I think you mentioned county thirty-four, so that probably is county right of way.
No, I checked with county, landfill and Tim Tojus told me that it's city.
Okay, well, we'll dig into it. We have, I have no idea who does that.
Okay.
Thanks for bringing it up. Thanks, Everett.
Okay, on to G1 Old Business for Tiff for Sand Company. We're gonna approve a resolution calling for a public hearing for January twenty-fourth. Any discussion on that before we approve that resolution?
Um, could you just explain to me in layman's terms what exactly is going on again?
Sure. Well, that's a good question, um, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor.
I do not mind at all.
Um, so as part of the package that the, uh, the folks from the sand company submitted to the state of Minnesota, which allowed them to apply for their, um, thirteen million dollars in housing tax credits, um, the city has a, had made certain qualifications that they would do. One of those was a low-cost lot, um, so we'll be providing them that lot at a lower cost because it qualifies for that affordable housing component. Another was a TIF, which is a Taxation and Financing District. In essence, what that does is the taxes that are accrued by the property, once the project is built, um, for a certain period of time or a certain dollar amount will be given back to the developer. It's a, it's a pay-as-you-go TIF, which means that the, the taxes that are paid during the year, at the end of the year, then will be paid. So the city's policy in the last, well, since I've been here at least, has not to have the upfront development TIFs, which is common, more common in metro, but to do those pay-as-you-go TIFs. So that's kind of what they're looking at.
So what we're doing is we're gonna be setting a public hearing to discuss whether or not we should grant them that?
Yeah, it's a, it'd be a public hearing to, uh, to allow for public comment, to, to see if there's any public comment that anyone has on authorizing that Taxation and Financing District. That's right.
Okay.
Okay, Dan, anything?
I intend a motion to approve the resolution calling for the public hearing on January twenty-fourth regarding the sand company TIF.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, stand up a second.
Second.
Thanks, Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. New business number one, operator agreement.
Yeah, including your package, you have an operator agreement. So as council's familiar with the, some of the issues with recruiting sewer supervisor, wastewater supervisor we've had. So we have, uh, been able to go out for some proposals from different operators. And, um, Mr. Volson, who was previously incumbent of that job, his proposal was the most cost-effective. So we do have this agreement that we've, uh, we've come to terms with him on, that he'd be hired as a part-time employee to fulfill the A-class criteria for, um, for the sewer plant. Um, the nice thing about that is it alleviates the, the strain on Charlie. Right now, Charlie's been covering both those kind of jobs and, and obviously he's willing to do whatever he needs to do. But, um, I think this will provide a short-term, it's a one-year contract, which the plan would be for us, um, you know, well, to see, of course, how it goes. And we can give him notice early on that. But at the nine-month mark, we would plan on relisting that job to see if there is a possibility of us filling that with a full-time operator. But currently, a lot of cities have got this arrangement, whether they go through People Service, which is a larger firm that, that does a lot of smaller plants. Or for example, Stewartville has a, a part-time operator who handles the plant. Um, the day-to-day operations won't be affected. The, the gentlemen that are on the ground will be doing, will continue to do the work as they are now. So, um, so positive for us to have that filled, to alleviate the personnel issue with Charlie. And also, you know, we'll see a, a small, you know, we'll see a cost savings because we won't be paying the full salary, uh, for an employee. It'll be just a part-time wage instead, so.
So is the two hour, or this is two days per week is what it's, I believe this says?
That's right.
And that's, that's enough to meet a regulatory requirement?
That's right, yes. Actually, it exceeds that number. But efficiency's sake, we thought it was prudent to have that number in there for, for two days.
So under A1, maybe I'm reading it wrong. I don't understand. It says twice a week, each visit consists of minimum eight hours with, or work remotely. I did not see that, sorry.
No, that's no problem.
I was trying to understand.
That was the part that we discussed and at this current time, it's not possible for them to do any remote work. But it, and the possible, it might be possible in the future for them to do some of their reports that they do electronically from their, from like a home office or something like that.
I read it and didn't see that word.
Nope, that's all right.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, entertain a motion to approve.
Make the motion to approve.
Thanks, Ryan. Do have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Insurance proposals. You have two in front of you in the packet. Um, thank both agencies for giving us their, their bids. I'll make a motion to accept the Stevens' insurance bid for the three years, um, going forward. Do have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Auditor's proposal, CLA and Smith Schaefer, that's the same in your packet. I gotta get that open here. This one is fairly cut and dry as well. Any suggestions from you? You work with the auditor.
My recommendation was to go with Smith Schaefer. They're more cost-effective and, uh, they do have familiarity with the organization. But it's always good to go through that RFP process just to make sure that our contracts are kept at the, at the level we, we feel like that would be the recommendation.
Perfect. I entertain a motion to accept the Smith Schaefer proposal for the audit services.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do have a second?
Yeah, a second.
Thanks, Paul. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Administrator's report.
Uh, a few things and I'll try not to jump around too much. I did have some information on the audit and insurance proposals. So we do appreciate those vendors, um, getting out to us and getting information. Um, some budget numbers there, including your package, you've got some updates on the Casson Aquatic Center. Uh, working hard to try and get those all closed out. And, uh, we were able to update our, our software, a lot of data entry today with the folks from Smith Schaefer Accounting. And so it, it looks like a, a pretty good year at the aquatic center. So we're very proud of the performance of that, um, from operations perspective. We really had a much better, um, sales and control of inventory with the stock and the concessions component. So it looks like we're probably gonna run a small deficit this year, but not, uh, not anywhere near where we, we have been. Or some aquatic centers have in the past. So I'm very glad with that. And with those numbers, I did plug in, uh, those numbers into, uh, updated budget. So you've got a copy of the, uh, the top sheet of our updated budget, basically. Um, so it does reduce our levy down to, uh, that five point seven four percent with adding the revenue and, and expenditure numbers in there. Um, so I know I'm not a big shift, but, uh, we like to get it down as much as possible. A couple of other things just to highlight, um, let's see here. We did have, I actually attended a lo, a long meeting today with, um, the Dodge Center ambulance folks. Uh, it was almost two hours and, uh, that is, uh, gonna be something, I'll have more information on it at our next meeting. I'll probably have to have a little conversation with, uh, with council and sort of discuss the, uh, the feedback and what you guys, uh, have got as a, uh, kind of your perspective on it. But, um, other than that, you know, I think I'll, I'll leave it with that and see if there's any questions.
Okay.
Also to highlight, I will be out of the office next week.
Okay. Any questions for Tim?
Oh, just, uh, one under your EMS update.
Sure.
Your discussion about the police chief and police department, uh, retention bonuses?
Mm-hmm.
It was stating the police chief was wondering if he was getting it.
Mm-hmm.
Did we, maybe I'm wrong, did we not approve the whole police department of getting it or?
It was the union contract members that were approved. So my recommendation would be, uh, to proceed with adding, um, the chief in. I had a good conversation with them and I think that, uh, you know, he does patrol, which is sort of the difference between somebody who'd just be in the office and someone who's in the field. And I certainly appreciate the, uh, the patrol time he's been putting in this year to help cover some of those shortages, so.
I would just like to add that I assumed it was for the full department.
So did I. Maybe I misunderstood that when we were negotiating or discussing it, but I just assumed it was one for all. That's-
Right. For the entire union, but he's not part of the union.
Well, but I didn't think of it as a union. I thought it, we were talking police department.
The intent was the entire department.
Yeah, that was the intent, yeah.
Okay. I would just-
Yeah, without objection from council, I think we'll be proceeding with moving forward.
Follow through their intent.
Chief having that.
I was just curious if it was in there and so I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, good question.
Perfect. Any other questions?
Yeah, Tim, um, I was looking at your aquatic center-
Sure.
-numbers and I was just-
I can't take credit for them. Jan, worked a long time on these, so for plus or for minus, you know, I won't, but I, yeah, go ahead. Ask your question.
Uh, the other expenses, um, do you know just generally?
Which page are you looking at there, Paul?
I mean, it was just a total. It was like a hundred four thousand or something of other expenses.
Second page.
Yeah.
That would be a lot of operational costs.
That's what I'm thinking.
So yeah, so if it's not a cost of concessions, that's not lifeguard wage.
Right. So how are we doing on maintenance versus necessary replacements and stuff? Are we gonna see that number, you think, go up next year because we didn't do a lot this year or?
Well, we have a contract-